I'd like to call this USD 305 board meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any additions or corrections to our agenda?
Yes, Madam President. Each of you have a personnel addendum at your seats. And then we also, I would like to request to the board that we amend the agenda and remove item 14 work session. We no longer need that work session.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as corrected? Or as amended, excuse me?
Madam President, I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
I have a motion. And a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0. Moving on to our recognitions and presentations, beginning with our Superintendent's Excellence Awards.
Good evening. Tonight, we will be recognizing Superintendent's Excellence Awards. Our first group of awards goes to boys' basketball players at Central. Their record was 23, and they were AVCTL league champions and sub-state champions. This was their best regular season record and first-time back-to-back state tournament qualifiers since 1975-76. Doug Finch is their coach. Will you please join Mr. Hall in the front? And will all the basketball students please line up next to Mr. Hall and their sponsor?
One-man team.
Team of five.
Team members: Braden Newshaffer, Senior; Marian Miller, Senior; Sam Schaefer, Junior; Braden Pavy, Junior; Zach Farmer, Junior; Ethan Spear, Junior; Ethan Kikefer, Junior; Jack Atherton, Junior; Cameron Demars, Sophomore; Brogan Richardson, Sophomore; Ben Driver, Sophomore; Harper Williams, Sophomore; David Grammer, Sophomore; Mark Grammer. All right. Quentin Stewart, Freshman; Erin Watson, Freshman. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Thanks for your work with these young men.
Congratulations. Great record.
Our next group of awards goes to girls' basketball players at Central High School who qualified at state. They finished fourth at the state tournament in Topeka and finished the season with 19 wins and six losses. Chris Spear is their coach. Will you please join Mr. Hall in the front? And will all the basketball students please line up next to Mr. Hall and their sponsor? Central girls' basketball team members are Emma Kane, Senior; Paige Higer, Senior; Casey Knopf, Senior; Ashley Mayorga, Senior; Maddie Nowlin, Senior; Bailey Petty, Senior; Sophie Justice, Senior, Manager; Lisa Backus, Junior; Maya Ward, Junior; Kaia Arkayan, Sophomore; Sadie Cosaw, Sophomore; Sheila Merkel, Sophomore; Delaney Nash, Sophomore; Holly Sanderson, Sophomore; Kayden Cobb, Freshman; Peyton Griffin, Freshman; Hannah Jones, Freshman, Manager. Would you please allow the Board of Education? Which?
Which one?
Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now.
Congratulations. Guys had a great run. Love your height. Play a basketball. Congratulations.
Next, we recognize Science Olympiad students at South High School. Matt Mosher is their coach. Will you please join Mr. Hall in the front? And will all the Science Olympiad students please line up next to Mr. Hall and their sponsor? Sawyer Gaiman, Junior; Kayden Odell, Junior; Taylor Davison, Sophomore, took second place in ecology at state on April 1st; Gavin Jones, Freshman, took second place in ecology at state; Ethan Sankey, Freshman; David Olenberger, Freshman. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Thanks for your work with these kids. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We will now recognize Science Olympiad student Eldon Taskinen. Gary Goodwin is his coach. Congratulations to Eldon Taskinen, Senior, at Central High School, who was the regional champion in Dynamic Planet and placed second at state in Dynamic Planet. Our next awards go to students in economics at South High School. Kevin Poland is their coach, and he is unable to attend this evening. Will all the economic students please line up next to Mr. Hall at this time? The following students qualified for state economics. Advanced Division, named for Adam Smith; Tyler Ross, Senior; Alvaro Escobedo, Senior; Eli Truwe, Senior; Dylan Crupp, Senior; Intermediate Division, named for Richard, for David Ricardo; Lilian Colette, Sophomore; Brandon Woodhull, Sophomore; Emily Allen, Sophomore; Avery Brown, Sophomore; Taylor Davison, Sophomore. Congratulations. We now recognize students involved in Life Smarts at South High School. Sue Montoy, the coach, and the Life Smart students are unable to attend, but we will recognize them. Tyler Ross, Senior; Logan Peppers, Senior; Dylan Crupp, Senior; and Eli Truwe, Senior. Congratulations. Our next group of awards goes to South High School students who qualified for robotics. The robotics team competed at Wichita State University, earning a fourth-place finish in semifinals and advanced to the finals, where they earned a third-place finish. In December, they competed at the National Best Competition at the University of Arkansas, where they earned 11th-place finish out of 38 teams. Lyric Cairns is the coach. Will you please join Mr. Hall? And Adam Lesser. And will all the robotics students line up? Chandler Kane, Senior; Mason Frost, Senior; Dylan Crupp, Senior; James Marshall, Senior; Jacob Morrow, Senior; Isaac Newman, Senior; Caleb Demel, Junior; Edwin Duran, Junior; Joshua Franklin, Junior; Isaiah Marcott, Junior; Aiden Trombo, Junior; Jason Wen, Sophomore; Christian Thull, Sophomore; Jacob Wilcox. Jacob is a sophomore. Joan Owinski Moreno, Sophomore; Gavin Jones, Freshman. Joseph Martinez, Freshman; Ramon Medina Castro, Freshman; Emily Pilcher, Freshman; Brock Roats, Freshman; Ashley Scott, Freshman; Santiago Vasquez, Freshman. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now? Our last group of awards goes to robotics students at Salina Central. Sheila Schaefer is the coach and unable to attend, as are her robotics students. We will acknowledge them by reading their names. Team members are... Mr. Shoman will accept the certificates. Team members John Carter, Senior; Aaron Nesting, Senior; Damon Jones, Senior; Joshua Franklin, Junior; Reese Matthews, Junior; Graham Matthews, Junior; Parker Armstrong, Sophomore; Gail Garcia, Freshman. Congratulations. Thank you.
Moving on in our recognitions and presentations, we'll be with Dina Horst and our Challenge Award.
And I sub for Mrs. Schaefer today, so I know she was taking the students to national, so it's a reason. Hopefully, they do extremely well, and you'll be able to give them another award. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I've been traveling to other communities, and it's always really cool to be able to come to your own home community and see how well you've all been doing. As many of you know, the State Board of Education's new vision for Kansas' education is Kansas will lead the world within the success of each student. We know that our schools are doing extraordinary work every day for students in Kansas and, of course, in Salina as well, but we know that much more needs to be done. So, much like when President Kennedy, more than 50 years ago, delivered his famous "We choose to go to the moon" speech, we believe this goal will organize and measure the best of our energies and skills, whether you are a student or whether you are a staff member. We also know that parents, grandparents, and community members who support the education of Salina's students are vital to their success as well. So, it's my honor to be here today to recognize and celebrate three of the great success stories in our state. Cottonwood Elementary, Oakdale Elementary, and Central High School are making a real difference for our most at-risk populations. Knowing firsthand how much hard work and total commitment goes into that effort, I'm extremely proud and pleased to honor Cottonwood with two of the award Challenge Awards, Oakdale with one of those awards, and Central High with two of the 12 2017 Challenge Awards being given by the State Board of Education in the State Board of Education District 6. So, you're amongst a few, so you should pat yourselves really well on the back. But we know we still can do some better. We can be better. This award recognizes schools for outstanding achievement and uncommon accomplishment based on Kansas Assessment Results, attendance, and other demographic information. I hope you will also take a moment to join me in thanking the members of the Confidence in Kansas Public Education Task Force for their vision in creating this award and for their ongoing work in ensuring that we yearly can recognize the hard work of our teachers, our administrators, and our students. During the past 14 years since this award was created, we have seen significant improvement in the performance of Kansas students in reading and math. And we've narrowed the gap between ethnic groups and our economically disadvantaged and advantaged students, but there is still a lot more to be done. That's why we're counting on our Challenge Award schools to continue pushing forward with the great work you've been doing and perhaps even sharing some of the strategies that have been successful as well, so that we can spread the word of how we really can make even each student even more successful. Kansas is blessed with extraordinary educators and administrators whose leadership guides our students to achieve beyond what students usually even believe themselves to be possible. And the Salina School District is a great example of that fact. So, keep setting high expectations. Keep providing the support your students need, and keep believing that Kansas can lead the world in the success of each student. And as you do that work, know that you have the support and gratitude of everyone who serves on the State Board of Education and works at the State Department of Education. Also, thank you, members of the Salina Board of Education, Superintendent Mr. Hall, administrators from the Central Office, and Principals Mr. Griffiths, Mrs. Dortswiler, and Mr. Shorman. And actually, this was from last year, so I have to say thank you to Mrs. Rector as well for your excellent leadership. So, would someone from Cottonwood Elementary come forth? And they are being recognized for reading and math, and it's fifth grade, so... The fifth graders are, of course, at Lakewood now, I would assume, or maybe at South Middle. Thank you. Thank you for all of your hard work. The next school to be recognized is Oakdale Elementary, and their Challenge Award is for fourth-grade math. The next school that I'm recognizing is Salina High Central, and their awards are for 10th-grade reading and 10th-grade math. And by the way, I've subbed in all of these schools, and I've seen the great work that they're doing. So, I want to personally thank you. And before I sit down after we get our pictures taken, I want to congratulate all of you and thank you very much for all of the things you do to make education in Salina great and that helps make Kansas education great as well.
Thank you, Dina. Moving on in our approval of our consent agenda items, we'll begin with the minutes of our April 11, 2017 regular meeting, the minutes of the April 20, 2017 special meeting, our personnel report, our treasurer's report, our investment report, our journal entries. We're approving incumbencies, including to Cox Business for the dark fiber five-year renewal lease in the yearly amount of $221,160; to Learning A through Z for the license renewal in the amount of $26,036.30; to Edgenuity in the amount of $75,000 for the license renewal; to Mastery Connect in the amount of $53,300 for the student licenses and web professional development renewal. We're also approving Kennedy Hartland Interior renovation bid to Ponton Construction, Inc. in the amount of $142,753 to include the base bid and alternates number three and four. We're approving our 2017-2018 food program prices to include an increase of five cents to student lunches and 10 cents to adult breakfast lunches. Would anyone like to?
Madam Chairman, I move approval of the consent agenda items as read.
I have a motion. And a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0. Moving on to our public forum, if anybody would like to address the board, now would be your time. I think I have one, so it'll be just a second. Oh, I think that's okay. If you're ready, go ahead. It's fine. You're fine. No, you're fine. It's a confusing process. But I will read you something before you start. So, just as a reminder, a public forum is a non-action item on the agenda. So, the board appreciates you taking the time to share your thoughts and everything with us, but this wouldn't be an appropriate place to make comments of a personal nature to any district employee or student. I don't want you to make any comments that violate the privacy rights of a district employee or students. If you do, I'll ask you to stop. If you have any concerns with one or more employees, I would prefer that you go to that appropriate supervisor or the superintendent for further review. Okay? So, if I stop you, you've kind of gone too far, okay?
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so do I just talk?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Well, anyway, I just came up here to thank Mr. Hall. And I'm an emotional person, so if I cry, just ignore me. I do this all the time at graduations. Anyway, I am an early childhood special education teacher, and he has been so supportive of our program, of our students, of our families, of me. He's gone above and beyond anything that I would expect of a superintendent. I mean, for example, we go fishing every year, and he comes out every year in his suit with these little bitty preschoolers that are wanting to shake his hand with fish all over their hands and fish water. He has come to every preschool graduation, so he can attest that I stand up there and cry. He has come to every family. He has come to every family feast that we have and eats with the families, doesn't stand off and just kind of watch of it. He sits and eats with my families. I had a little girl that didn't have, I'd had senior citizens come and make gingerbread houses, and she didn't have, there wasn't enough seniors, and her mom didn't come. So he sat down with this little girl and made gingerbread houses and got frosting on him and, and told her stories, read her stories. So that was amazing. We go to Eagle Crest for Halloween parades, kind of like a community thing. He has attended those to watch the little kids. So I can't thank you enough. So I just want to say thank you. And thank you for letting me talk.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for visiting with us. We appreciate that. All right, again, if there's anybody else who'd like to, now would be your time. Seeing none, was there only that one? Okay. Moving on in our Action Agenda item to our textbooks adoptions with Ms. Exine.
At the last board meeting, I visited with you about the textbooks that our teachers are recommending for adoption for next school year. And tonight, those are on the Action Agenda. And so if you have any further questions, I would be happy to answer those now.
Any questions? Seeing none.
I. I move that we approve the textbook adoptions and purchase of textbooks and instructional resources as presented.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none or seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our student handbooks with Ms. Kiltz. For, are we approving them individually?
Yes.
Starting with elementary.
Elementary handbooks. There were no proposed changes to the 2017-18 elementary handbook. As in the past, yearly data and personnel changes are not included in this. It's recommended that you approve the 2017-2018 elementary handbook as presented.
Okay.
I move that we do approve the 2017-2018 elementary handbook.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. Move on to our middle school.
Okay. Middle school, 2017-2018 middle school student handbook. There were no proposed changes to that handbook either. So as in the past, the yearly data and personnel changes are not included in this. It's recommended that you approve the 2017-2018 middle school handbook as presented.
Okay.
I move that we approve the 2017-2018 middle school handbook as presented.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing and not seeing any, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. Thank you.
Okay. One more. 2017-2018 high school student handbook. No proposed changes for this handbook, and as in the past, the yearly date and personnel changes are not included in this. It's recommended that you approve the 2017-2018 high school handbook as presented.
Okay.
Madam President, I move that we do adopt or approve the 2017 and 2018 high school handbook as presented.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not hearing or seeing any, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Moving on in our, to our discussion agenda, beginning with our 17-18 handbooks, beginning with our Chromebooks.
Good evening. I am just going to refer you to the board packet that we prepared for you. On the discussion agenda, there is a table, and that is what I'd like to just speak from this evening. The Chromebook handbook was put into place when we went to the one-to-one initiative at the high school, and we had a little cleanup to do and are making several suggestions that really are just cleaning up wording and clarifying. But I do want to speak specifically to the ownership of the Chromebook under use and ownership on page three. What we are proposing and would like for you to consider is actually allowing students, starting with next year's incoming ninth graders, that when they actually graduate from one of our high schools, that they would, we would give them the Chromebook that at that time that they would take ownership of the Chromebook. Until that time, the Chromebook would remain the property of USD 305. But we are thinking that initially, we did not put this into practice because the Chromebooks would have only been a year or two old. With our freshman class, those Chromebooks would be four years old, and at that time, we would need to purchase new Chromebooks for our incoming freshmen. And so we feel like it would be an appropriate time for us to change that procedure with this incoming, incoming class for next year. So that would be beginning with the class of 2020, that the students would take the Chromebooks with them when they graduated. They would need to turn them in prior to graduation so that we could, our MIS department could address the way those work on our local domain and make them so that students could use them outside of 305. But that, so that's the, probably the largest change. And then on page three, under use and ownership, to just match current practice, we have changed the wording from student help desk to media center. When we talk to the students, we talk about taking that to the media center, and so that just clarifies for them. Also, under use and ownership with returning the Chromebook, most times when students withdraw from school, they actually turn in any school property to the office. So uniforms, instruments that they, we may be renting to them, textbooks. And so just to clarify and make sure that everything gets back to the same place, we've changed the wording there to office. As far as care of the Chromebook, again, we've replaced language to rec, to reflect the fact that the student would be working with the library media specialist. On page five, under use and ownership, again, we've changed student help desk to the library media specialist and media center. On educational use, we did make several revisions to address the way we're currently handling loner Chromebooks. Initially, what we did was we put the loner Chromebooks in the media center. And the teachers found that it would, they recommended that it would be better if we would actually put loners in the classroom so that students weren't having to go somewhere, and we would protect class time. So that language just reflects that change. If for some reason a student doesn't have his or her Chromebook, there are several available in the classroom that the teacher can give them and, and learning can go on. So that just reflects what we're currently doing. Under educational use, we just removed a word. Under digital citizenship, we removed the words without permission. That was referring to students logging in under another user's account, and we don't ever want them logging in under another student's account. So now the wording just says that they're not to do that. And then under the frequently asked questions, we adjusted the wording so that it matched what I've discussed above, especially in relationship to that ownership of the Chromebook. So what questions can I answer for you on that Chromebook handbook?
I don't see anything.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move on in our discussion agenda to our 17-18 handbooks for athletics.
Yes, Madam President. And each of you have had the opportunity to kind of read through the athletic handbook. There's, the only changes to the athletic handbook for 17-18, other than changes in date and changes in names and so forth, are adding additional coaches. And actually, this went through the Athletic Board. We had requests brought to Athletic Board. It was asked at the Athletic Board then to then go back and collect data from our league schools as to how we compare in terms of the number of coaches for various sports. As a result of that, we came back and, and what we'd like to add in terms of changing the athletic handbook would be to add additional coach for high school boys and boys basketball and high school girls basketball, which would be two for each school, total of four coaches. The recent poll of the ABCTL, the league, showed that coaches, that there was a discrepancy in coaches with other league districts. We were typically about one coach less in each of those sports than, than most of the other league schools. We're also requesting, as part of the handbook change, that we have additional coach for high school boys swimming and high school girls swimming, which would be a total of two coaches. This is a little bit different. For the past 10 years, we've added additional coach primarily because of concern for safety and supervision with the amount of student athletes that we've had involved in those sports. And so we, we did that, and I have that discretion as superintendent any time that I feel that there's a concern about safety and supervision. Now, this is just formalizing that because we've been doing it every year for the past 10 years, so we might as well just, instead of bringing the request every year, we just might as well go ahead and put it in the handbook. For wrestling, same situation, additional coach for high school wrestling at each of the school, total of two coaches. Again, same reason in swimming, we've authorized that every year. A lot of that has to do with safety. Again, a lot of it also has to do with oftentimes, we have a third team that travels on Saturdays and makes it very difficult with lack of supervision. We need to have someone go with them, so we've always added an additional coach for supervision to do that. Again, for the same reason, we would ask that that be part of the handbook. And then soccer, additional coach for high school boys soccer and high school girls soccer for each school. That's a total of four coaches. And again, with the ABCTL survey that we did, we showed a discrepancy in the number of soccer coaches that we had as well. So there's a total of 12 additional coaching positions that, that's reflected in the athletic handbook. Other than that, that's really, those are really the only changes, so.
Any questions or discussions? Not hearing any. We'll move on to our school board reports and upcoming dates of importance. Beginning Sunday, May 7, we have a retirement reception and recognition at Lakewood at 3:00 PM. Thursday, May 11 is our DCP graduation at Salina West at 4:00 PM. And of course, Sunday, May 14 is our graduations, beginning with South High School at 2:00 PM, followed by Central High School at 5:00 PM. Thursday, May 18 is the SAEC graduation ceremony at 7:00 PM. And Saturday, May 20 is our chamber legislative meeting at the Chamber Annex at 8:30 AM. Ramona, would you like to start us off with our committee reports?
I'm excited. It caught me off guard that I will, I will start. On Friday, we were invited to celebrate the Kansas Teacher of the Year B Team, which means that they were, they're awesome people, but they just weren't finalists. Yeah. But they were incredible. We met with some members from Dodge City and from, it seems like Overland Park. I mean, they were just, they were, they get together as a group, which is, is a phenomenal celebration of their accomplishments. And I put in a word for a T-shirt because they were like, one of the teachers had his class to design these incredible tie-dye T-shirts. They were cool. All right. Then today, I was really excited because I read to first graders at sunset. And the book that I read was, "Mary Had a Little Ham, Little Ham, Little Ham. Mary Had a Little Ham, and Stanley was his name." So we sang as well, because of course I got to throw in. So we, we did. We read "Mary Had a Little Ham" by Margie Palatini, and it was an incredible, incredible story and kind of a nice follow-up to the Challenge Awards because what Stanley the Pig kept saying was, because his owner or his, his, yeah, his human, Mary, kept saying, "Stanley, I know you can do it. I know you can do it." So he would say, "I can do it. I will do it." And so, so the first graders and I, I kept saying, he said, "What? I, I can do it. I will do it." And I heard them singing "Mary Had a Little Ham" as he went back to the library and saying, "I can do it. I will do it." So if we don't infuse anything else into them, if we can give them the courage to, to try new things and recognize, "I can do it. I will do it regardless of who says I can't," then we've been successful.
I too enjoyed the KTOY luncheon, and we'll have an opportunity to read Iwana Iguana to third graders this Thursday. That'll be fun.
I did attend South Play Letters to Sala, and that was well done, and the topic itself, I thought, was very timely. I understand South is also up for Jester Awards, so we'll see what happens with that. And I too attended the KTOY luncheon, and the teachers are made up of, of the teachers that received the top three places at each district across the state of Kansas, which is a beautiful setting for enlightening and, we were talking the entire time, I'm surprised we ate it all, but it was a lovely lunch. Enjoyed it.
Dan?
I also went to Letters to Sala at South High, and it was really excellent. I went to the Teacher of the Year luncheon, celebrating especially Linda Rohr and Jake Montoya for our district, and they had a great group that had bonded with each other and were having a great time wherever they went across the state. The other thing I intended was Central's poetry slam last week. Central, I mean, South is having theirs this week and the finals. Well, I guess the culmination of the poetry slams at both high schools is Friday night at Ad Astra, and so I'm hoping to go to that, too.
Brad?
Thank you. I also was able to attend the Teacher of the Year luncheon, and I also read to kindergarten class at sunset, and I led, read "Riley's Purple Plastic Purse." So that was a, I do not have a song. And then I also have a truce board meeting this week, so.
All right. I actually attended my 12th ribbon cutting last night at South Middle School, and what a beautiful facility that was. I got to meet Gus, the resident dog, as well as, I will admit, eat some brownies that were prepared by the students. I couldn't pass that up. I attended the CKCIE Board of Controls meeting last Wednesday as Carol's stand-in, and what a, what an interesting meeting that was. I believe we talked about budget and, and legislation and Medicare expansion and all the things that go along with that. It was very informative, and I appreciated the chance to be able to kind of step into that and get to see that other side of, of what goes on there. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, that's quite an accomplishment because we've had 12 ribbon cuttings. So that's, you know, we have, we had 13 projects completed. It was a great, a great ceremony last night as well. We had a good group show up and had an opportunity to kind of show them around, and the South Middle School facility turned out absolutely marvelous. We have the facilities, needs that were taken care of, that were requested. The new gymnasium is really a beautiful facility, and will actually provide the equity between our two middle schools, and we will no longer have to have student athletes who'll need to practice until nine o'clock at night because they only had like a gym and a third, basically. And so everything just turned out beautifully last evening at South Middle School. I had the opportunity, I think this is a trend, because I am reading at sunset tomorrow, and I'm reading to second grade students, and I'm not sure the name of the book. It's sitting on my desk, and I'm going to go home and practice it tonight because I need the perfect inflection and everything else. But, but I'm looking forward to, to being at sunset tomorrow. Also, I'm, I'll be at an opportunity now tomorrow because they have their annual The Voice competition, and I've had about three or four opportunities to judge that, and they asked me to come back again. And so I'm, I'm definitely looking forward to being at opportunity now and judging, judging The Voice. A week or so back, I had the opportunity, held my, my last soup with the soup conversation. In the last few years, we've had 25 conversations roughly, and have the opportunity during that time to visit with over, just over 250 staff members on everything USD 305. Actually, we had, it was actually quiche with the superintendent last time. We didn't have soup, we had quiche, but it was still very, very good. But even better than that was the conversation, the opportunity to, to find out what's on everyone's minds and, and what we can do to better improve our school system moving forward. And so I've always enjoyed doing the soup with the soup conversations. Also, I had an opportunity, we had a school marathon meeting. It was held here, I believe, last Friday, Thursday or Friday, actually Thursday. And I, shout-outs to, to Dana Casal and Louise Comfort for the work that they've done in organizing the school marathon program. We now have that in all of our schools, and they wanted me to share with you, they expressed the appreciation of the district's support for the school marathon program for the last few years because now it is, it is embedded in all of our elementary schools. And they just expressed an unbelievable amount of appreciation for the district's support of the school marathon program, and, and they believe that it will continue to move forward. So I, as well, had the opportunity to meet with the KTOY teachers. It wasn't during the luncheon, but I had the opportunity to visit with them first thing in the morning, gave a welcome, met with each of them, had several from Dodge City, one from Goodland, one from Ellenwood, several from Great Bend. Of course, our two with Linda Rohr and Jake Montoya. I left them saying, you know, you're in good hands with Linda and Jake, without a doubt. And it was such a good group, it was a close-knit group, had fun, they enjoyed each other. And so it was really enjoyable doing that. I actually had, when I visited with the, there were two teachers from Dodge City, found out that the, the one teacher was a vocal music teacher who just taught my niece. And he said, "Are you related to it?" And I said, "As a matter of fact, I am." And, and so he had high, high praise for that, so I made sure I told my brother. But beyond that, it was just an excellent, excellent group and a great opportunity to meet with some outstanding leaders. And I must say that they were very complimentary of the progressiveness of the Salina School District. They should feel very, very good about where we're headed as a school system moving forward. So also had the opportunity, I believe, next week with, it might be this week, actually, with Mr. Upson to tour with a group from Newton School District, who will be touring, touring Central High School. They specifically called and. asked for the opportunity to tour Central High School because they want to see how our construction processes are working. The key on that is that they're interested in moving down that road, but they are so intrigued with how we can continue to have school and have the amount of construction taking place that's taking place. Absolutely, we've had several groups already who've come through requesting that same type of tour. I think we had a group from Lawrence a month or so back requesting that same thing. Basically, we're considered a leader across the state for what we're able to accomplish in terms of having building construction going on and no interruption or disruption to the school learning process. So just a shout-out to the folks here and to really Chris the Department in terms of what's happening with our construction and the impact that we're seeing across the state from folks and the recognition that we're receiving as well. I will be attending on Thursday the annual KW Kansas Western Prayer Breakfast. This is always a nice event. I think I've been through about four of them. They invite leaders from across the community to attend that and recognize the National Day of Prayer, but it's also a recognition of leadership, and I appreciate the opportunity to be part of that event. Tomorrow evening, I'll be attending the Central High School Honor Program. I'll actually be presenting the Riveran Scholarship to the winners this year, and I always look forward to the opportunity of attending our high school honors events because it truly sends home the message of how well we're doing as a school system in terms of the preparation that we have for our students as they move on to the next stage of their life. Also, just a couple shout-outs on a couple of events that are kind of down the road, but I want to make sure everyone's aware of them. On Saturday, May 20th, we have the opportunity to be a partner in the First Pedal Power Festival. And I have to really shout-out to Cheryl Brown for the work that Cheryl's been doing in putting this event together. It's going to be at Oakdale Elementary School. It's from 11:00 AM to 12, I'm sorry, it's from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. We have a free hot dog lunch from 11:00 to 12:30. I'm going to be one of the ambassadors, and so I appreciate the opportunity to do that. I'm not too sure that Ms. Wassler may be part of that as well. But I tell you, the excitement about that is that we're teaching such things as bicycle safety. We're teaching such things as we have a mayor's bike ride, we have a bicycle poker game, we have bicycle games and activities. But it really, truly, for youngsters, promotes the importance of bicycle safety. And so I think that's going to be an excellent event. I look forward to attending that as well. And then the last, I just want to mention this because this is always something, it's kind of been near and dear to my heart, but on June 16th and 17th, I've been invited once again to attend the Dunbar reunion. And I don't know if you are familiar with the Dunbar reunion or the Dunbar School, but I've attended about three of them now. They have, they have these reunions about every other year, every two to three years. And they always invite me to come out and give kind of the welcome, and then we have kind of a letter that I put in their program. I typically stay for the entire event because it's such a moving event. But a little bit about the background of Dunbar. I mean, the first year union was in 1991, but the school was actually built in 1922. And a lot of folks may not know what the Dunbar School is all about. It was specifically built in 1922 for black students. It was closed in 1956 and was sold at that time, 1958, to St. Francis Academy for use as the cannabis national headquarters. I believe it's located at 509 East Elm. If you ever have an opportunity, the first year I was up there, I had to give a welcome, and I had to do a lot of research. So I went up there, and they have actually a plaque next to a bench that if you ever want to learn about it, just go up there and read it because it gives you the entire history of Dunbar reunion. So I went up there and stole some good information that I gave with my welcome. But it's very moving. It's a moving story. Before the opening of Dunbar, Salina Schools were integrated. In preparing for the inner reunion in 91, Harrison and others researched the history of the school. At the time Dunbar was built, blacks could not teach white students. So Dunbar was established to give black teachers a place to teach. Progress with the price, this achievement was attained but not without a price. The building of Dunbar School was a blessing for the teachers because they could return to their hometown and secure a teaching job, even though this was the start of teaching our children the meaning of segregation. Harrison and others wrote the 1991 reunion book. But that isn't the primary reason for abandoning integrated education, according to Bob Caldwell, a longtime Salina educator who's a Dunbar teacher and principal of segregation. That was the trend back in those days. We have come so far in 60 years in terms of where we are with public education today. So I always thoroughly enjoy attending that event and visiting with the folks. A lot of those students who attend it, they're not young anymore, but they still have a lot of energy, and they have a lot of passion for Dunbar, Dunbar School. And so I plan on attending that June 16th. It's actually probably going to be on the 16th and/or, actually, I have a pre-convention on 16th and 17th. It's at the holiday end this year. So something that I've always just been very, very proud to be a part of. And that's all I have, Madam President.
And we need an executive session for personnel?
Yes, Madam President. If I could request an executive session for 15 minutes, please, for personnel.
Would anyone like to make that motion?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education go into executive session at 6:05 for 15 minutes for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel and their contractual obligations. Because if this matter were discussed in open session, it might invade the privacy of those discussed. And that the Board of Education reconvene into open session at 6:20 in the board conference room.
All right. I have a motion. Would anyone like to say that? I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not hearing or seeing any? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. We'll adjourn until then.